Good evening, welcome to the January 6, 2014 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the great republic which stands above all law, order, and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is unanticipated. Does any of my board members have anything under unanticipated? Mr. Quall?
Nope.
Mr. Quall? Announcements and recognitions. I would like to extend my thanks to the emergency service workers who put in their time and effort to keep us safe this weekend through this past storm, and to DPW for doing a very, very good job in light of the conditions that they had, blowing and blowing snow, drifting snow, and extreme cold, but the ice melt doesn't work that well when it's single-digit numbers. But they were out there and they were communicating with the police to let the police know what they were doing on Friday to, for their cleanup activities, and it really went well. I sent a Mr. Peckard thank you message today. I think they did a great job. We dodged a bullet. Of course, there's no snow out there now because it all melted, but that's New England. But I want to thank everybody who worked on that. They did a, they did a great job.
Be careful driving tomorrow morning.
Oh, well, I wouldn't wait till tomorrow morning. I think it's going to be pretty dicey when we get out of here tonight. It's raining and the temperatures dropping, so it'll be good. Be exciting. Board members have any announcements?
Does somebody want to mention about the Christmas tree pickup?
Yes, okay, so this week and next week, all week, that's two full weeks, Christmas tree on the curb pickup with the trash, and it will be posted on the website.
It is on the website.
Yep.
Mr. Quall?
I'm fine. Yeah, I just want to read area. I actually had two customers come to the bank today, Middleborough residents that commented on how good of a job they did at clearing not just the streets but the sidewalks downtown. So, real kudos to the DPW, also to Gas and Electric. My power never so much as flickered. I don't think many other people did as well, so, yeah, real good job by everybody.
I'd just like to remind everyone, if you haven't yet, sign up for code RED so you can get those emergency notifications. As Selectman Quall said, we didn't have any power outages, but, you know, the next one could be different.
Anything else to follow?
Nope, I'm good.
Wow. Okay, that's good. Any announcements from the audience? Okay. We're going to pass over the minutes. We'll vote them on the January 13 meeting. Would entertain a motion for the chairman or his designated sign the warrant for the week ending 1/3/2014?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. New business. From the Middleborough Police Chief. Would like to extend offers to three individuals with a conditional offer to the third as a backup?
And fourth.
A fourth? No, that's...
That's an alternate, just in case one of the first three fails one of the first three conditions. That way we won't waste any time about getting them into the academy. Like I stressed, getting them into this academy is important.
Right.
That these things get done as soon as possible.
And these would be David Howard Jr., Matthew Manser, and Boz McMahon?
Yes.
These are the three main candidates, and the backup candidate, I hate to use that term, but backup candidate is Kevin P. Frazier?
Yes.
Okay. Anything you wanted to say about this?
Well, these are the names that came down from civil service. I had two of the sergeants do background investigation talk. Then we subject them to oral boards, which included myself, the three lieutenants, and Sergeant Graham, which is a charge of field training. And these are the three that we thought were best for the town. I mean, these are probably the most important decisions we make because we're going to invest in these, these people for a long time. So it's, it's critical that we get the best people we can. And of the list that we were eligible to hire off, we felt that these were the three best.
Okay. Any questions of my board members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Chief, I just want to say I appreciate the in-depth process you went through with the detail. As you said, very important decisions, so I'm very impressed with the process you went through to screen these individuals.
It is, it is probably one of the most important that we made because your investment so heavily into these people for the future.
Okay. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve, second.
And that'll be approving the three conditional offers of employment to David Howard, Matthew Manser, and Boz McMahon, and an alternate of Kevin P. Frazier. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we have, we have a...
A second vote.
A second vote now to send letters to David Markadones and Robert Packard relative to the offers that they are being rejected.
Right, that they're, they've been passed over.
Okay. And I would entertain a motion authorizing me to sign.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Chief, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Lieutenant Mackowitz is leaving? Saturday's his last shift?
Um, that's the plan.
Gee, maybe we should stir something up Saturday. Make this day exciting, huh?
Yeah, he's, I think Saturday's going to be his last day. He gave us plenty of notice.
He did, yeah.
But, you know, this is a profession that he's always wanted since he was a little kid, and he achieved his goal and has done a great job. And, you know, he'll be missed. He's probably got the most institutional or historical knowledge of the police department anyway down here.
Right.
You know, he's just been, I mean, the old chief warning said, you know, he was hanging around anyway, probably as well. And it'll be, it'll be a change not having a Mackowitz on the department after, I mean, his cousin Danny retired in September, and his father was on the police department since the, I think, 1950s, so, only sixty-four years. Kind of odd not seeing that name on the roster.
Yep, and will be. Will be missed. I enjoy our Friday night discussions sometimes. Okay, thank you very much, Chief. We have a discussion about a vote to use town roads for the biking portion of the eighth annual Patriot Half Triathlon for 6/14/2014. Do we have anybody here to speak about that? No? Okay. So the bike, I'm not going to read the bike courses. Quite a stretch through town, but it's, neither the police nor fire chief have any issues with it, so I would, it's a pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. And this course carries the caveat that they have to clean up after themselves. You feel better now, Glenn?
Goes right by our house every time.
All right, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Vote to set the date of 2/28/2014 as the deadline for submission of annual town meeting articles.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, I'm giving you this year's budget development schedule, which lays out, you know, the process for, you know, my review with department heads, your review with department heads, the finance committees, and then ultimately the town meeting. And part of that every year is also, you know, reviewing and making recommendations on town meeting warrant articles. So, you know, we had already talked about moving out town meeting to June 2nd, but I don't think we did set a date yet for making warrant articles, producing warrant articles. So, this, this schedule calls for them, you know, a deadline of the end of February.
Isn't that a little bit aggressive? I mean, that's almost three months before the town meeting.
Yeah, it is, although that, I think, then has been what we've done when we've, you know, we did it last year with an earlier town meeting. You can always extend it, or you allow articles to come in after the fact if something, you know, is, you know, arises, you know, late. But it's, it's good to have, you know, the, the articles in, we can, we can produce them, you can start reviewing them, and we're not in so much of a time crunch.
So we want to stay more consistent with setting the article date, given the fact that we would normally like to have our town meeting in April.
In April, exactly.
And the only reason we're varying this is because of the police station situation. We need to move the town meeting.
Correct. Back.
Back, or ahead. Okay. All right, pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have a betterment agreement for 404 Marion Road in the amount of $16,698. I believe Ms. Delft, you would like to speak on this issue?
Yes, I would. This is near me, I drive by there all the time, so I was kind of curious when I saw this, because I never really see a house. I spoke to the building inspector, there is a house on that lot very far back which burned down, so there's really no one living there. And maybe they're rebuilding. As of now, the building inspector has no permit applications or anything in. So I'm wondering, is this kind of the cart before the horse, or do we grant these betterments before there's a house or someone living there?
Why don't we look into that? Because that's all news to me, so...
I just, because I drive by and I never saw much, so I did speak with Bob Willen today.
We'll talk with the health department and see what, what they know about it before we do it.
Okay.
Just put it off for next week.
Let's table this motion for...
Yep. Is that a motion?
Nah, you don't need a motion.
Okay.
You just want to get bottom discussing it. Questions? I got the hammer. You know? Uh, well, it's, seems problematic to be putting a septic system in for a house that's not there, even in my mind.
There's a shell of a house, but it's been burned down, no one can live in it. I mean, it's, they would have to rebuild entirely.
Ghosts.
Yeah. Yeah, the ghosts.
We have approved a liquor license. Liquor license.
Like my other argument.
Getting a little ahead of myself, that's all. All right, how about a license agreement? That's, got one of them in there anyway, for a property off of Wareham Street. And we've been using this as our, we're going to use...
Equipment storage primarily. It's adjacent to the DPW parcel, and, you know, we've been doing this for about a year now, and, you know, we'd like to continue.
And this will continue until?
June.
June, okay. So it's basically a six-month agreement?
Correct.
And $1,040 a month?
Yeah, we, the property owner asked for a slight increase. It was $1,000, it's now $1,040. Her taxes went up.
Okay. Well, that's good, we're paying her taxes. I like that. Get in on that somehow. Okay, any comments or questions for the board? Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All right, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We'll discuss the board's goals, activities, and timeframes.
So, you have a paper copy of what we, I think, looked at last month. Now everything's filled out with some, with timeframes, and we also have a copy of Selectman Knowlton's email about the various boards and committees he would like to invite into Selectman's meetings. We talked a little bit about that earlier today, and, you know, we might try and do those in groups rather than do them at every meeting, maybe have three in once a month, you know, and just try and do it that way. Might be a little easier to, to schedule and not keep people waiting. Sometimes our agendas get a little behind. And, you know, we'll just, you know, I think maybe we'll start with some of the lesser-known committees, you know, and move our way through the list that way. I think there are a couple that are pretty, pretty inactive at this point, you know, and I don't know how, how many people are still involved, but we'll...
Okay, well...
Get them all in before the end of the year is the goal.
Okay, did you want to...
I do. I made up for not being here last time and getting my information in, so I have this. It would be easier than getting copies to everyone, and we can see it because there's a lot going on. I just wanted to show you what's happening this month and et cetera, so...
So you skip a meeting and we got to go through a PowerPoint presentation?
And you got to go through my PowerPoint, I'm sorry. I did extra work for you, see? So basically, the plan, when I've been working with the Economic Development Office, is to organize and market what we have, the existing attractions, and then we'll gradually add events that will attract people from a widespread geographical area. So, what's going on now? The appointment of the tourism committee members. I would like to request that we do that next week. I have enough people that have sent letters in of interest. Tomorrow, I am going to meet with the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism Regional Office regarding a couple of things. A request that I had put in for funding from the Mott, the Massachusetts Office, and that funding would be to fund brochures, the website, and I will also be meeting with them to coordinate to get onto their local, their website, their social media. And I'm looking into, there's a website called Great Festivals, Fairs, Events, and Media Directory for 2014, and one of the local organizations, Middleborough on the Move, will be purchasing that, and they are going to be listing a group of all of our festivals, and, which is very good. It reaches 22,000 media outlets, including all of them in Massachusetts. So, that's where that goes. The Plymouth and Brockton Bus, we're still trying to coordinate a place for them. We talked about the KOA, they are interested. I was lucky enough, one time when I called, someone picked up the phone there because they're not really up and operating right now. And they are interested, but they can't really do anything until March 12th when they open. So in the meantime, we're scrambling around. The electrical company in Campanelli Drive has also called us and said they would host it, and Christmas Tree Shop, when they open their outlet, would be happy to do that too. We'd also discussed, in the meantime, the Oliver Mill Park, but Charlie, you said that they can't turn around there? So again, we're scrambling. They want to start by the end of the month, and we're looking for a place on 44 for them to stop, and they need about six parking spots there. Next, please? Oh, okay, no, the most important, on the bottom, and that's why it is in bold letters, is. I have been talking to Bridgewater State, and I actually met someone at one of the tourism hearings I went to, and she is a resident in Middleborough, she's a marketing student, and Bridgewater State has an actual program that they pay the interns. So I am meeting with her this week to see if we can get her in there, and that is most important, because there's going to be a lot of information gathering and setting up with the website once, once our funding comes through and we start doing that. So I'm meeting with her this week, and that is, nothing really goes anywhere till we get someone working in that office, because we just don't have the personnel. February, that's when I would like to have the intern in here and get the website and the blogs up, all those events that are listed up there. March, we have also met with, the Office of Economic Development, myself and the Gas and Electric have met with Jerry Saval from my hometown Maps, and he needs about a two month lead, so if he starts now, he could have our maps done by March to start distributing. I've also made contact with the tourist information stops on the highways and the hotels and restaurants to put them out there. The Gas and Electric has $3,000 to contribute as well in their budget, because they're going to be using these, which is really good, because it opens us up for some of these Mott matching funds. Spring, actually, this is not apply for the cultural district designation. We have applied, we should have an answer back as to whether we get it in April. Summer, I would like to have the funding and everything in line so that we can, so that we can launch the website by fall. I also am putting in a couple of requests to the State House. They have some money around that we can put, I hate to use the word earmarks, in for, but for some of our projects around here. They have tourism money, so January, I'm putting them in now, and we're hoping to get those by the end of the summer and the fall. Ongoing, of course, are always historical acquisitions for the town, nature trails. One of those earmarks might be a boat access for the Nimitzka River closer to in-town, where people could pull their boats up and then have lunch or whatever. So I'm looking at that. Grant writing for specific activities, and again, it's with organizations that have a proven following. For instance, one of the requests I'm going to make to the state, and then in turn makes us eligible to make a request to the National Endowment for the Arts, is to have the Brockton Symphony do a concert in town. They always sell out, you can, there will be hundreds and hundreds of people here to come for that, so, and if I can get it paid for, it'll be great. If we can make it so that it's running the same time as one of our other events, all the better. Also, there's a National Horse Show that's interested in coming. They have a following. Again, this is organizations outside the town, there are only so many resources we have inside, so I'm trying to get businesses and organizations from outside that will bring their following. The Flower Show is another one. Harvest Fair is something we could coordinate around here. And again, with the attracting establishing, established businesses, I've made contact, I'm this close, I'm not going to tip the scales or say anything, but I have a couple that are ready to come and invest in town and open. Good businesses that will bring their clientele, restaurants and retail, they are. And that's where I'm at. Wasn't too bad, right?
That was excellent. Good job for being on vacation.
I know.
Being on vacation. Did you actually go on vacation?
Yeah, I did.
Mr. Knowlton, do you want to add anything to the list of items that you've got on here?
No, I've got a, I believe a fairly comprehensive list of the different committees and commissions.
Right.
I, I think what Charlie said about combining three of them at a meeting once a month works. There's roughly 30, so that would be 10 months. So even with our summer schedule, we should still be able to get through it.
Sure.
And, you know, again, as Charlie said, I think some of these, some of these organizations may not be fully active, and maybe some of the individuals involved in them want to get on a different committee or work on something else. You know, if we've got that pool of interested people willing to work for the town, then let's put them in places where they'd be most effective.
Okay. Mr. Quall, you wish to add anything to any of the items you have?
Well, you know, the first one's just still exploratory right now, so I'll hold off any comment on those. In the second one, you know, I think we've all taken a look at this and see if there's areas, which I'm convinced there is, for our buildings. And I know that these things are actively going on in the school system as well, so, you know, I've spoken to town manager on these, and, you know, we're going to, again, we're still exploring our opportunities, and hopefully by these dates, we'll have something in place where we can actually put some spreadsheets together and provide you some more information, so...
That would be the operating cost you're talking about?
Correct, right.
Good. Mr. Quall, you wish to add?
I was on in the Nimitzka this week.
Is it still flowing?
Still there.
Still there?
Awesome.
That's good. What's the flow rate?
To tell you the truth, I'm keeping an eye on it. It's a, I bet you it's a lot higher tomorrow than it was today. So we got to, yeah, keep an eye on it. I get, I'm actually on the email list through the Haring Commission, which is one of the very active committees that we have in town, and they, they have weekly pond levels, weekly dam levels and all that stuff, so...
Right.
And that's that, the Rotary, I haven't heard anything about in a little while. Trying not to poke too many people on that one right now.
Right.
Time's coming. And we'll see how it goes. If, we should, I mean, don't you think we should be hearing something soon?
I'm going to call the Highway Administrator tomorrow, because I'm just tired of waiting, and just see what he tells me, because, you know, we got the funding, they got more funding, so, you know, why, why don't we have a decision?
Right.
And, and if we don't have a decision, then I think we implement what's on the paper, which is let's get our businesses to flood them with letters, because, you know, I think that's the only thing they're going to listen to, is, you know, if business says, hey, you know, this has got to get done, it's affecting our ability to operate in the borough, you know, in the Commonwealth.
We should get businesses that have decided not to come here, because of that Rotary to write a letter or two as well. Because, yeah, yeah, I was, I saw Secretary, did you see Secretary Davies on the, on the news with...
I, I, I didn't, I didn't see it, people told me about it.
Talking about, yeah, about staying off the roads and everything.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we should have an answer on that soon enough. I'm sure the Nimitzka will be taking out the spotlight as well. Actually, I had it, I think it was about two months ago, I had a nice conversation with Senator Roderick from, who represents Lakeville, about the Nimitzka and the Aswaps Pond Complex. He's a, he's a pretty nice guy, I like him.
Are they getting any closer to doing a real survey on that? Is that, I mean, I think that's...
I don't know, I just don't know.
You really got to put all the pieces together.
It's supposed to be a federal, some federal money going towards it, but the, I got to get to the Aswaps Pond Complex meeting and see where they, they generally like on a Tuesday at 10:00, so it's tough for me to get there.
10:00 in the morning?
Yeah.
That's convenient. Okay, I'm working on trash.
So we're going to have a presentation next week from, you know, the state assistant staff, just to talk about what they're going to be able to do for us, and, you know, that'll basically be the kickoff to, you know, a lot of work to try and put, you know, a different system in place.
Right.
And that'll help us increase recycling and...
Maybe we can implement that by route.
Yeah, you know, the problem is, is that it's the equipment. I mean, if you're going to go to a mechanical setup...
Right.
It's, it takes less manpower, but you have to have all the equipment and the, and the containers that it can...
It's a different truck and a different barrel.
Different truck, it, it really changes everything, so it's hard to do it piecemeal. But I think we, you know, we can do it, we think we can retrofit the recycling vehicles, you know, appropriately, but, you know, it's the, you know, we're going to have to buy some, some packers for the trash, and then ultimately, I think we have all the same vehicle, because you could use it either for, by going single stream, you could use a packer for that as well. It doesn't have to be what we do now.
Right.
But, you know, that's, that's what we're working on, is how, how do we do this in a cost-effective way, and, you know, that we can afford to do? And, you know, because I think ultimately, you know, the savings in terms of, you know, just wear and care and, you know, injuries is, it makes it worthwhile, it's cleaner, you know, and you have standard receptacles all through town, not...
Right.
You know, the stuff that just flows over the curve now.
I guess the one question I have too is, we've got people that buy, that go and do stickers.
Yeah, that's the, that's going to be the rub, is how do we deal with that?
How do we get stickers?
That's, that's the difference, you know, that's, that's what we're going to, that's one of our challenges, is, is how do we figure out to, to deal with the sticker?
I think it'll be stickers. You'll have to, all, everybody's going to have to be, been...
Yeah, it, it may end up being that's the only feasible way. So, but, but again, that, that is one of our, you know, the things we have to look at and figure out.
I'm holding off on buying trash bags until this gets...
Yeah, I think you'd wait.
I don't want to rush up myself. Shoot this off in the foot. The other, one of the other things, or one of the other tasks that I have is the bond issue for road improvements, which, of course, we can't, I've been told, we can't use Chapter 90 funds for a bond issue, too. which, of course, we can't, I've been told, we can't use Chapter 90 funds for a bond issue, to pay a bond issue.
Right.
Even though the state...
Does it?
...bonds against future federal money coming in, so I... I enjoy being the tail of the dog that, that looks at the dog doing everything, and then a dog looks back and says, sorry, you can't do that, you know?
Yeah.
It's, it's just, sir?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Brian, you know, you have questions, I've always had regarding this, I know we can't bond it, and I don't want to throw tax override or anything like that, but with what we're doing with our evaluation, with the tool that we're, I think we're doing with the GIS, we're evaluating every road, we're going to have this great list to really attack these roads that need addressing. Is it something that we might want to look at a five-year, you know, let's put a project together for five years, get a little additional tax revenue in if we can do it, and maybe try to do a plan like that, and then go back to where it was five years later? I don't know if that's something we could do. I throw it out there because I'd love to see the roads really hit hard.
Yeah, I think we have to see what the pavement management study says, what, you know, what the, the cost is, and then figure out how do you, how do you do it, you know, how do you finance it?
You know, one of the, one of the things that I think, doing that pavement management study, first of all, it's going to identify, really identify every piece. And one thing the functionaries like to see is a complete identification. They don't like to see, oh, well, we've got six roads, and here they are, and that's why we want to use a bond out of Chapter 90, because we think these six roads are it. Well, this study is going to show you all of our roads and where they all stand, and that might help when we can really prove that, you know, this is what we need, and this is why we need it. This is the survey, I don't know, maybe we can get some dispensation from they who sit under the Golden Dome to, to be able to use some of that Chapter money, Chapter 90 money for, for a bonding. You know, where we got proof, where we've got significant proof of our, of our conditions of our roads, and that, that we can be much more cost-efficient with our spending, maybe. It's a hope. Okay, any other discussion relative to the board's goals, activities, and the timeframes thereon? In that case, let us move right ahead to... You don't have any hearings, meetings, or licenses? No? None? Okay, then we'll go see, talk to the town manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have in there today is the, the overall, you know, is my budget memo to the department heads, and as you can see, we, that went out last week, they're due the 24th, and then after that, I'll be putting the other recommendation for you in February, and then you'll have your hearings. You know, it, it looks like we'll be able to balance the budget without, you know, extraordinary measures. You know, we made the healthcare change, that's going to, that brought things back in line, and providing that the GIC rates come in where we, we hope they'll come in, you know, we should, you know, even though, you know, we had a forecast meeting a little while ago, you know, we're looking at right now a deficit of about $700,000, but that's not, you know, that's with an expected 10% increase in healthcare, and hopefully it will not happen. And, you know, so we should be able to get to a, to a balanced budget, you know, maintaining our current services anyway, maybe even be able to add, add something here or there.
You know, I always, in this job, you know, we're always trying to look to the future. And, and that healthcare, between healthcare and the retirement programs, both of those can be the, the real thorn in your budget. That can tip that budget wagon over in a heartbeat.
Yeah, absolutely right. I, I mean, you'll see in, you know, and I'll put the forecast in the report next week, but what I left space for was, you know, starting to fund our OPEB, you know, responsibility, basically our healthcare responsibility to retirees on a regular basis. You know, we've been doing it on an ad hoc basis for the last couple of years, and, you know, I, you know, I think that's something that we have to focus on and, you know, see if we can put together a funding schedule like we have for retirement that pays off the unfunded liability and, you know, at a certain point, and then we're left just with the normal cost, which is, you know, not as daunting. You know, the trouble with our retirement schedule and the trouble will be with our OPEB schedule is that, you know, we have to make up for all the years that we weren't funding it. And that's going to take some work, but, you know, you know, the, the town of Middleborough is, is, every municipality is a, is a long-term player. We're going to be here forever, and, you know, once you get started on something, you know, the sooner you get started, the sooner you get to where you want to be.
Right.
So that's what I'm hoping we'll be able to do. We've asked the, the consultant for the full, you know, for a funding schedule for OPEB that basically picks up on, you know, when we fund our retirement unfunded liability, we slide that budget capacity over to our unfunded healthcare liability. And, and before we're able to do that, that we, you know, we gradually, you know, start contributing to it as well. So we, we have a bona fide schedule, that's, that's what my hope is, and, you know, probably in the next few weeks, we'll have something from it.
Any questions of the town manager? Nope? Okay. Next item, next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Nolan?
Item number four. The Middleborough Fire Department has received a Student Awareness Fire Safety Grant through the Department of Fire Services, $4,686. That grant is to utilize, to continue efforts to provide fire education and prevention programs in schools and throughout the community. That's when you see your little first, second, and third graders come home with the plastic red fire hats. It's a great program, I'm glad that they've got the grant to continue doing that. I'm fine, that's it.
That's it? Okay. Mr. Quell?
What do we have? You know, me, I like to read these job postings. Did the water department have one?
Very last one, yeah, 12.
My fingers aren't doing the wiring. There we go. Okay, so there's a job posting here in Middleborough for Grade Five Water Station Operator. Duties will be mostly around maintaining a water pump. Operate, maintain levels, I'm just trying to think of those, it's a... It does look for a CDL Class B license. Position requires a minimum of a grade, looks like 1T Massachusetts Drinking Water Treatment Operator Certification. I believe it's a, it's a full-time, 40-hour-per-week job, so it will include, you know, union contract, the Grade Five Step Ones, I guess that's a $21, $21.14 an hour job. So, if you are out there and you hear this, or you know of anybody who might meet that description, let them know that we are hiring. The other one I just wanted to get clarification on, there was a letter from our conservation agent regarding some tree cutting.
Item seven?
Item seven, yeah, does that have anything to do with the other stuff we were talking about? Is that completely separate? Because it was going, it looked like the letter went to a resident. I didn't know if that was in response to a complaint tied into our N-Star stuff? I'm sorry, there it is, right there.
I don't think it's tied into the N-Star stuff at all.
It's not, okay, so this was a letter going to residents, letting them know that, okay, that particular piece, okay. So, other than that, thank you again, as was already mentioned, to our Fire Chief Lance Benjamina for continuing to educate our children about fire safety and finding a way to do it at premium cost. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Farley?
Ah, the last one, from the Taunton River Watershed Alliance. They're having a water quality monitor pre-training session on Saturday, March 1st. The session will be conducted by Alex Hootzager, Chair of Taunton River Watershed Alliance Water Quality Committee. No prior experience is needed, but you must be willing to commit about two hours on the second Tuesday morning of each month. Volunteers who sample sites are encouraged to attend, and this is, on sampling days, you go out around 6:00 and deliver water samples to the laboratory by 8:00. And your participation will bolster Taunton River Watershed Alliance's efforts to track water quality at selected sites along the Taunton River and several tributaries. If you're into that type of thing, which I am, it's a pretty cool thing to do. If you're not, I wouldn't go.
Okay, let's go.
Number two, the state, again, is looking for places to lease. We obviously don't have 15,000 square feet, but where are we with the bank building? Would it be feasible to market that to maybe some state agencies, let it know, let them know it's available?
Yeah, that's not really how they do it, they, you know, they go out, you know, when they get a request, and they have to go through Capital Asset Management, Capital Asset Management does an RFP process like this.
Okay.
But, yeah, we haven't had many recent inquiries. It, it might be necessary that we actually hire a broker, because, you know, we've tried to do this on our own, we haven't really gotten very far, so I think the deadline is the middle of the month. We'll see if anything comes in at all, and if not, you know, maybe we take a different direction.
And I just wanted to mention number three from the mass housing. Apparently, Middleborough ARMS have been approved for their funding, so we can see some improvements there soon, which is a good thing. That's all I have.
On number three, do we have any responsibility in the syndication of bridge loans?
No, no, this is all privately, privately funded.
Okay. I do not have anything. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for contract negotiation for non-union personnel, so it'd be for the town manager and town accountant not to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
This'll be a poll vote. Mr. Quell?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
When the chair votes yes, we're in the executive session. Thank you very much for coming, and have a good night. Did you come just to...